Okay, it's Wednesday, January 4th, 2023. We're going to start the Town of Sangerville Select Board meeting. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Item two, approval of the minute Select Board meeting, 12/28/2022.
Make a motion to approve that meeting?
Second. All in favor, we're all three in favor. Review of Treasurers' Warrants Payroll Two and Accounts Payable 108. And then for 2022, that was for 2022, and one.
Make motion to approve A and B's read.
Second.
We're all in favor. Open session, which kind of goes right into number five. Tyler Atkins, you have something to tell us about solar?
Yeah, so my name is Tyler. I live in Monson. In my day job, I'm an executive at UGE International, which is a New York-based community and commercial solar developer. We do projects in the US and in certain markets around the world. We've done about 500 megawatts of projects so far. We're generally in the kind of commercial rooftop and small round mount space, which is called distributed generation. So we don't do huge projects. We don't connect to big transmission lines. We just connect to kind of street side power lines. In addition, I'm the Chair of the Select Board in Monson. In Monson, we've done a couple of solar projects and including one for the municipality. So a couple of different scales, but wear different solar hats. Very familiar with how the policies have come to fruition in Maine. And so also understand kind of the municipal perspective here. So happy to give a little teaser on kind of the programs in Maine and how all this stuff is coming together, why you're seeing so many solar developments, and also answer any questions you might have about the programs, permitting, et cetera. Just really here to give a primer and be sounding board for any questions you might have.
And also Tyler, you had called our code enforcement officer, isn't that correct?
One of my colleagues did.
Oh, one of your colleagues, okay. Regarding whether we had an ordinance?
Correct.
And the answer was no.
No.
And what was the response actually from?
Yeah, the response was no, something might be working on, but there was nothing conclusive.
They had approached us. At least they were kind of spitballing something.
Yeah.
Right, right.
At last meeting, at two meetings ago.
And it may have been prompted by your colleague's phone call.
It must be like, why didn't the Dale be here?
Oh, gosh. So Jerry's on his way?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, they had brought up, just wanted to know if we wanted to work. It's, I think, I think the planning board was kind of...
Hold just a minute?
Yep.
Yeah, we're, it sounds like...
Lance Peterson, Jerry's on his way.
You thought it was at 4:30?
Yeah. Do you want to do other stuff or come back?
Um, yeah, we can, we kind of, we'll, yeah, we'll leave item five for a minute and then we'll come back. All business, Town Hall Building.
I'm still, we're meeting next week again with, I'm meeting again with Nick. We'll go to the building to get some measurements.
Okay.
We'll definitely have something by time meeting.
So I did kind of look up there on the roof before I came in. It definitely looks like a few of those slight shingles are loosening up.
Ah, not good.
Uh, anything further on that?
We had a meeting next week.
Either of you? No? Okay. Town manager's report?
I have none. Just met last week.
Uh, road commissioner?
None.
None? Selectmen's concerns?
Just the, obviously the dirt roads, but I mean, it's like mud season, so.
Yeah. One long one.
And they have been out doing some work on, on the roads.
This weather is not helping.
No, no.
Camping is...
Oh, sorry, sorry.
I have a concern and only curse me every time I come to these meetings. That willow tree is really interfering with the road. We should get someone over here to clean that.
When you come down...
If you're coming into the fire department from...
The willow.
Yeah, the willow is literally hanging in the middle of the road.
And I, yeah, okay.
All right.
We'll get it cut.
Yeah, I mean, it's right on the edge of the road. I don't believe we'll have any issue.
No. Yeah, it's too bad. They had an obus there when they cut the trees out front.
Yep.
That apartment building.
Yeah, well, I mean, they didn't care that it was in the road.
We're meeting now.
No. We'll get it cut. And then we're done by 4:5.
I mean, doesn't that exclude everyone that has to work until 5:00 PM or like?
No.
It's not their meeting.
No, and we also record them, so anybody who's curious can listen for free.
This is my son Ben.
But not participate, right?
Actually, the participation is just to listen.
Oh, well, that's, I guess that makes sense. If you want to, if you want to do something, yeah.
Well, you just call one of us at home. Our numbers are all listed right on the website and we're always available.
I get it, stop, stop, right? These millennials.
I know, I know.
They just never stop talking.
We're just waiting for the town...
It's like head of the...
Head of the, head of the...
Planning Board.
Planning Board, yeah.
Is Jerry coming?
Yeah, yeah.
Is the solar farm on your property?
Yeah, we're...
I thought, so I thought it was probably you I thought, so I'll call the phone.
No, it was my colleague.
Colleague, yeah.
This is Lance Johnson. This is my son Ben Cabot.
Yeah, we've met before.
And my husband Rick Cabot, Lance.
That's right.
We've met before.
Yeah.
We had a nice meeting. Actually, your name's on the really, right? So we're all...
In several towns?
Yeah.
Not in Monson though, no.
No, Parkland.
Parkland, okay.
And just some discussion off the record. I think one of the problems, you know, we have solar, but now... Did you bring a five-megawatt system? Good size system. And one of the things that I found, we've had ours probably at least 10 years now. And one of the things which has always been a concern for me is the state of Maine is totally solar unfriendly in terms of reinvesting. For instance, if you went to places like New Jersey or perhaps New York, when you feed back into the system, you know, you can really get a reasonable return on your investment in the state of Maine. I mean, for what they do, and I'm talking now about central main power. If I had to do it over here, the only reason I did it was bottom line friendly. That was a good idea. Government was paying for, for part of it and what the state was sort of made it reasonable in terms of the state being solar internally. But I did in terms of encouraging people to do it, I mean, reimbursement, a fair reimbursement coming back on your electrical bill, it doesn't exist.
The, a lot has changed, so the policies are a lot friendlier now than they were before 2019. And then the other piece is that it's, uh, the programs are, they're one-to-one credits, right? So if you send a kilowatt hour in the grid, you get a kilowatt hour credit on your bill. So then you're not going to get a check from the utility company, but you are going to get the equivalent of a credit on a future bill. And as the prices of electricity have gone up due to natural gas prices, the value of those credits has also gone up because it's connected to that. But yeah, there are other states that have much, much friendlier policies.
And I didn't mean to imply your company by any means. I'm talking about these states.
Yep.
I don't think, think we've seen that much more reflection at all.
Would you still, would you have the same benefits though? Like did those 2019 benefits grandfather in people who had already...
Yeah, it's always been the same one-to-one system.
Oh, exactly.
But if you had, if you bought your solar panels 10 years ago, they were a lot more expensive than if you would have bought them today. And the price of electricity 10 years ago was much lower than it is today. So that's where you're seeing a kind of inversion of the project dynamics here.
And we were fortunate at the time, I mean, we were fortunate in the installer that we had was a friend. Really had state-of-the-art. So in those days, you know, most people were installing 200-watt, 10 watts. I think ours were either 240, 250. So they were...
Yeah, that was, that was huge at the time.
Yes, it was. It was absolutely state-of-the-art and you needed to really not shut it. But as I said, I just, you know, the state and especially CMP, which is...
But that doesn't really have anything to do with what we're...
Well, no, 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 I just, I take it...
It's the same policy regime.
Yeah, but I mean, as far as like the upside, you know, the economic benefits and everything else to any landowner considered doing this.
Yeah, different...
But that's what I said. It has nothing to do with this. It was a question, you're an expert, and I just thought I, if you're ready, I can comment on that. But I think that's one thing that most people I talk to who have in fact solar. And we don't, it's not, we don't have battery systems, so it's basically a meter backup.
But you can bank it? What you're saying is, and, and is it unlimited in terms of how much you can bank?
It's unlimited, how much you can bank, but you have to use the credits within 12 months.
Right, exactly. And that's my, that's another point. You get to the end of the year and you have extra credits and this and that and that.
You lose them.
You cannot reclaim it. That's a...
It's a rolling, it's a rolling process.
Yeah.
Right, you never get to the end of the 12th, it's a zero challenge.
Exactly.
Yeah, yeah.
So I mean, and again, they really need to get up on what's going on in the country, but yeah, in terms of the whole process.
I think, at least what I'm reading, as of 19, we had a pretty robust reimbursement. Our net meeting, metering policy is, is huge. It's virtually full retail.
Yeah, not really full retail.
Okay, so that means all the infrastructure, all light poles, all the gentlemen that are pulling the ice off the wires, that's in that cost. And if, if I have a solar panel, of course, I don't have to pay for that. Most states, most states don't have full reimbursement. They have a fraction of that. That's part of the reason I think you're seeing so much interest in Maine right now. I have a cousin who owns a grocery store in Patton. A delegation from Thailand came up there and courted the town fathers recently to find Japanese whiskey and just like, and they want to do some huge projects in northern Maine of all places, where we have like the shortest days on the planet. But the reason is this, the math we're talking about. It makes total sense for them.
Bigger projects are under different policies, so that's...
Yep.
Those are in the wholesale market, so they're competing against, it's not hard to, renewables are the cheapest form of power generation on the planet. And so it's not easy to beat the price of natural gas with a solar panel. But that's, that's not what we're talking about.
Right.
That's the, the bigger, the bigger projects. But some states have less than retail credits.
Yep.
Most of the states where most of the distributed generation is being installed actually have above-retail credits. States like New Jersey, which we were talking about, because they have, the renewable component of a project gets valued on top of all this other stuff. And so they're all going through this, kind of how these pieces all get stacked up. But yeah, it's just, you know, just as you have 50 different states, it's often different utility to utility. And so really it's very location specific to whether, whether our system makes sense or not.
I was looking at our CMP bill, I just, I don't, I don't see it. Again, there's...
Have you taken a look at it? It's not very...
Wait, wait, I said, one more time.
I tell you one bill.
I'll be, I'll be...
This is my, this is my professional career, right? And when it comes to, let me just say in a different spot, but it's easier for people to...
Your box.
We're good, we're good.
But it's not that easy to stand here. I was, I was going through my own bill to figure out what was going on. And it is not, it is nearly impossible to figure out based on how the bill is designed to figure out, are you getting the right number of credits? Are they being applied appropriately? When it comes to your bank, you know, how old are the credits? Should I be worried about losing some of them because they're going to expire? It's, in CMP, you have a, not only an unwilling party at the table, but a hostile party at the table. Who does not want this to succeed. And so there's no real motivation to make it easy for the end user to understand all of this stuff.
And I'm also biased since we have a pride of mine. I had to deal with them for two and a half years and let me tell you, that was an unpleasant experience. I mean, every time you turn around, there was something with them.
Yeah.
And we always exceeded any of their requirements for transformers. We have all, you know, Mylar TreeWire, I mean, well above there's one, I mean, it was like pulling teeth.
It's a miracle. Anytime you flip the switch, the lights come on. It's a miracle.
Well, I think it's also nice to have a local person who is an expert, a local person who in fact is in this, you know, part of the industry now, because it's going to become, it just continues to grow and grow. And you have that expertise here with us. I mean, you're wise in a positive sense in terms of me as rural people, you know, you're there to help us, which I think is, is a good thing.
Right. Jared, do you know everybody here?
Who's that? I don't know that. I know.
Ben.
I'm Ben.
Oh, Ben.
You've known for a long time.
Yeah. He knows it as a little guy.
And for people who are listening to our meeting, and lots of people do, Jerry Peters, head of the planning board, Chair of the planning board, just arrived. So we're discussing solar power and that sort of generation. And so that, that's kind of the purpose of this meeting. Jerry and his team had reached out to us a couple of meetings ago. There had been some talk amongst your group, I believe, should we consider an ordinance or what sort of things? So that, this kind of ties into that. So that's why we wanted you to be here. So, all right.
All right, jump in?
Yeah, yeah.
All right. So the long and short of it is that in 2019, the legislature passed a law that opened the plug gates to community solar in Maine. Before then, there had been policies in place that kept projects below a certain size threshold, which made most of them not economically viable. And it also limited the number of participants in a project to 10, which meant that also it was not particularly viable from a community solar standpoint. So there were some projects where, you know, maybe, maybe the group of us, we decide we want to have a shared ownership system. We pool our money, we build a system and it gives us all credits on our, on our bills. But those were few and far between. What the legislature did was say, okay, instead you can have projects that have up to five megawatts, which is, you know, that's about up to 30 acres of footprint. That's kind of the range that we're talking about here. You can have up to five megawatts and you can have unlimited subscribers and you can have third-party owned systems. So that means that now all of a sudden, companies like mine can say, okay, we're going to find a good piece of land, we're going to develop a project, we're going to build and own that project, and then we're going to find subscribers who can use that energy and offset their power bills. They don't have to pay anything upfront. All they do is just buy the credits from us on an ongoing basis and it's a guaranteed savings model. So what you do is we say, pay the standard offer price for electricity that's set by the Public Utilities Commission every year, that is, say, 15 cents. We will offer you a 10% or a 15% discount versus that rate. So you're basically buying credits. Every credit you buy, you save 15%. And those, the PUC sets those rates every year, right? They go up and down over time, generally they go up. And so the, that amount that you save is 15% of that standard offer rate. So, so you're always paying less. The, the reason the state does this is, one, for environmental reasons, to support the development of renewables. We have, the state has Renewable Portfolio Standard. It has additional goals to be, I think, 100% renewable powered by 2040 or something like that. And increasingly, states are, are implementing policies that promote the deployment of renewables. Distributed renewables in particular are a tricky thing, right? Because we were just talking before about, these are, if you were to build a huge solar farm, that would be considered wholesale jet power. And participate in the, you know, ISO New England wholesale markets, you would get something like 5 cents per watt hour for those types of, that type of generation. That's called energy only. So that would be a portion. Then those, that same project owner, they turn around and they'd sell the capacity in the capacity market. So ISO New England, the regional grid, they need to ensure that there's always enough power in the grid at any given time to make, to feed everybody's demand. And so you get paid on top of your energy for your capacity. Then you can sell one of the renewable energy credits that are generated by producing clean power. And that's another piece where they earn money. And then there's other grid services, frequency regulation, so on and so forth. So this, this is called the revenue stack, like how a, how a power plant owner makes money out of their system. Now, in, in community solar in Maine, it's simpler than that. The project owner just sells the credits to people. They represent one kilowatt hour of energy and they get that feedback from the subscriber. And then they can sell the renewable energy credit on top of that. But they don't get, they don't do grid services, they don't do capacity markets, they don't do all this stuff. It's a simpler market. Now, we were talking earlier about the cost shift, right? About if, if you get a full credit, a full retail credit as the solar project owner, part of that is for the energy, part of that is for the supply of the energy, the grid itself. And so it is, it is the case that, you know, CMP is going to be widening because they're not getting the same revenue stream that they were before. But on top of that, there are lots of benefits that come along with this type of system that are not accounted for in that, in that basic math. Those are the environmental benefits. Those are things like, you know, pollution reduction, land use, waste, volatility in electricity prices over time, because these are fuel-free systems, right? You build them and they work for 40 years. You don't have to be subject to natural gas availability or oil availability, whatever it can be. And they also strengthen the grid, right? The grid right now is basically built around the idea of having a handful of big power plants that then feed transmission lines, that then feed substations, that then feed distribution lines, that then connect to your house. And all we do is just turn on, turn on the light and the light comes on and we pay for it. That is a vulnerable system, of course. It is also, it's vulnerable to environmental impacts. If you have storms, it's, it's terrorism risk, there's, you know, cybersecurity risk. There's a lot of vulnerability built into that system. It also means that if a system, part of the system goes down, you often have huge outages because you either have to shut that system off and wait to repair the problem, or you have to make up for that somewhere else. And that's when you get big spikes in energy prices, like during the winter storms in Texas, when for whatever reason, supply becomes unavailable. They're not a distributed grid because it's just Texas, they're just connected to themselves. And so when you're, you have a supply shock, then the price is skyrocketing. With distributed systems, we're now talking about going from having, say, 10 power plants in the state of Maine to having 10,000 power plants in the state of Maine. And that provides, you know, more of a spider web effect, right? You're able to balance the grid more easily, you're able to have a more resilient, robust supply. And that has network effects that depress the cost increases of things like price spikes on hot summer days, the need to upgrade power lines because of changing demand, so on and so forth. So there are, there are ups and downs as you're evaluating the costs and benefits of how these systems impact the grid. On net, it's at worst a wash and at best, actually distributed generation decreases the cost to everybody across the grid at scale. There, there have been many studies that show this. One is from the PUC back in 2015 that showed that the value of distributed solar was about twice the retail price at that time. There was a study from three years ago that showed in New England during a, in a particular heat wave, rooftop solar specifically saved the ratepayers about $20 million because instead of going out and buying from peaker plants, they were able to just use the solar generation, so on and so forth. So at a system-wide level, distributed generation is a net positive for everybody. But that's just kind of the landscape. The, what, what our, what our company does is so, a lot of companies just either develop projects and then sell them, or they build projects, or they, or finance the companies, they kind of own and maybe operate the projects. So we do the whole, the whole shebang. So we find good sites, we develop the projects, which is the phase we're in right now. Then we construct the projects, we have an EPC team, et cetera. And then we own and operate the projects over the lifetime. So kind of single point of contact from initiation through, you know, decommissioning 40 years from now. We will go and find the subscribers. So what we typically do in a community is once the project is ready for construction, we will go out and solicit businesses and residents in the community to sign up to the project. And then once that system is operational, we'll start receiving bill credits. And so we'll see from their CMP bill, a reduction because of their solar credits and then we'll bill them separately for that. I should have said at the beginning, actually, that the solar, the community solar industry in Maine is quite new, right? It's started, really just started in 2019. These projects take some time to develop. Most of that time is working through with CMP on the grid study process and figuring out how much it's going to cost to interconnect the grid to the grid. You know, when a system, when a system is approved for connection, all those, all the upgrades that are required to connect that system safely are borne by the project owner. That's not borne by the, by the ratepayer, the project pays for that. And so, yeah, we, we are also doing the building collections for, for the system over its lifetime. For the project that we're, that we're looking at here in Sangerville, we received approval from CMP. So we have our interconnection agreement, which is kind of the, there's two big pieces of, of the pie when it comes to development. One is, what is it, plot three, there's site feasibility. So that's things like topography, wetlands, endangered species, all that kind of stuff. There's the interconnection, which is the most time-consuming and most expensive part. And then there's, there's local permitting. And so the, you know, the, the site feasibility stuff obviously layers on to the permitting as far as land use goes. But permitting is, is, you know, if you're trying to build the people's backyards, they don't like that. And so that's a, a good way for, for projects to die. We generally don't try to impose on, we find good sites that are kind of out of the way a little bit. The projects that we're doing in Monson, I think are a good example of that, where one is, it's a small project in my backyard and it's kind of set back from the road a little bit. So if you're dragging the speed limit, you would never even know it was there. Another one is across the street, which is, you know, buffered behind a tree line land that had been cleared in the past and it's not really good for much. So we're building back there as well. And so, yeah, that's, that's kind of the summary. Why don't I leave it there, then I, then we can have a specific conversation about permitting concerns, if you like, but I'll just stop for a second.
I had a couple of questions, Todd. Thank you, nice presentation. Two questions. One, you command, you're on leased land, you do your project. Theoretically, that would be a property improvement, so there's a taxation issue. I imagine your taxes would in fact go up. You responsible for that? The landowner responsible for that? Obviously, if there was a taxing issue, you would inform the town?
We can't tax it.
So you can't tax it?
Out of the current legislation?
Yeah, in Maine, solar projects are exempt from, from property taxes.
It's another...
No, it's not great, yeah, it's not totally, because like a windmill you can tax, but a solar panel you can't.
It's part of the business, uh, the taxation.
Which kind of brings me to my, I'm looking at this meeting from the point of view of a selectman, because I, there's, I think there's a fascinating debate about whether clearing 1,500 acres of forest for solar panels is really a net gain and all that. But from a selectman's point of view, I, I look at our community as the land that we have is kind of our inventory. And whatever happens on that, eventually we might be able to generate some revenue, whether it's a, a store, or a home, or an apartment building. And anything that, ultimate, under the current rules, anything that we cover up with solar panels is essentially pulled out of our inventory and the town is not going to get compensated on this. Now, someday they may, I mean, I guess you could tear them down, but, so that, from a, from running the town's point of view, that's a concern of mine. And I don't see, I don't see any net positive from the town. So to me, that's, that would go in the negative column. Now, I've, I didn't know this, but you said Monson has their own system. That could be a positive for the town. So I'd, I'd be interested in those kinds of aspects. We own a lot of land.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, that's a lot.
There might be a, a spot where this would be viable. And that might benefit the town. I'm convinced that ratepayers, particularly poor people, are going to get stung in this equation. There's no way that we can pay people 15 cents for something that's worth 5 cents if that gets handed out to ratepayers. Has to happen. But if our community could realize revenue from its own solar farm, that might be a benefit.
Max, I could, or Todd, just clarify for me, what you're saying in terms of tax-free, but still the landowner is paying whatever the taxation...
You're going to pay the free second street.
I'm coming back to base.
Just like there's nothing on it.
Yeah.
But how does that work, Bill? So like, if you have a piece of property that's in tree growth, you've got to put a solar farm on, you're not going to be able to leave that in tree growth.
That's right.
You're losing actually... So is there, but is there an actually, for the real estate part of that, is there a tax exemption on the land, for the landlord, where there is the infrastructure?
I'm not sure I follow.
We can't tax the, we can't tax the solar farm?
Right.
So is there also a reduction on the real estate part of the tax? So...
Would our, for example, would our taxes for the X number of acres?
Correct. Go down?
Right.
I'm going to guess no.
No, my understanding is that, if I understand the, the question, if a property is in tree growth, then you got to take it out of tree growth in order to do this. And so then we would pay that penalty and then you would be taxed at the, at the higher rate.
Open space.
But it, how would it be? Because you're committing the property, because when you tax your land, the first acres for a house lot, you don't have a house lot anymore, now you have a solar farm. So you can't actually have that, can't really be the same tax base as current structure. Because that piece of property, like if you have 10 acres you're going to put into a solar farm, as far as taxes go, one acre, a two acre, depending on the town, that tax valuation is a house lot and the remainder of it is a woodland. If it's solar, it can't be a house lot.
But if it was just a vacant piece of land, 10 acres that was not in tree growth, but just a field you owned, it would get...
Still get, but you'd still get taxed for a first acre as a house lot.
Yeah, and you still would.
So that's going to be the same thing?
You still would.
Uh, would be, again, why, if, nothing that he's talking about doing is going to change a thing about how the town is collecting or billing their taxes.
Oh, well, yeah, no, it would, definitely does. I mean, for example, if you have gas pots...
I, I mean, in terms of what the town is currently receiving for...
Correct, well, but in the future it would.
And that may be...
More conceivable.
Of course, the, and I'm not advocating for a second, I'm just saying, conceptually.
I just buy that one. Have you seen the big one on 15 going into Bangor? I don't know if it's Glenburn or Bangor, I'm not sure.
It's Glenburn, right on the line. There's a whole to do with that particular progress.
Well, it's kind of fascinating because there's so much new living, you know, new homes there. And I said to my wife today, I was going to the dentist, I said, "There's no question that Glenburn is going to miss out on property tax here." That could have been homes.
Yeah, I'm...
For the next 100 years.
Yeah, I think, so, I'm going to address your questions in reverse order. On the, on the town side, so, yeah, we would, if you have property, we would love to take a look at the property and see if any...
We do.
Site, it's extremely site-specific, right? You need access to three-phase power lines, you need grid capacity in the circuits. So you might have a site that looks great by, you know, nine or 10 checks, but the, it'll fail because of the 10 checks, so...
I think our orientation likewise is probably questionable, that would be my...
Yeah, you might be surprised, you can put solar in some weird places, but especially now because the engineering of the racking systems is so, is so much improved, you can, you can basically build anywhere you want to if you're willing to.
Okay, well, then, we may, we're right in the middle of town.
I think that though the, the question about policymaking from a, yeah, you're right that the town has inventory, right? The land is inventory. There's a, there's a question when it comes to policymaking about, about personal rights though, right? Because you, do you set policy saying, "No, we don't want to do this type of stuff" because that then precludes it from being used for something else? The Glenburn one is the perfect example, right? Glenburn can say, "We don't want solar farms," in fact, that's what they end up doing. But Glenburn can't tell that property owner, "What I want, what we want you to do or not do with that property," right? If they wanted to build a subdivision, then they would have built the subdivision.
Or, or like a propane storage...
Exactly.
A million dollar tank.
Exactly.
The difference is the town can tax that, right?
Yeah.
That's...
Unless there was an order.
No, exactly, but that's kind of my, my point here is, is that, I think you're coming at this from the right place about the best, the best use of our, of our land. It's, but I don't like being singled out for specific uses because it's not the, the thing that we have in mind about what we would like that landowner to do with that property. There's also the dual-use side of this, which is that increasingly, solar farms are not just barren land underneath the solar panels. You can do a lot of stuff with the space under the solar panels. In fact, in the, the project at my house, we're actually looking at growing, growing giant sequoias and, and Don redwoods for, for dropshipping, like for, you know, for home consumption, basically. Growing them indoors and then planting them outside for a year or two while they grow up to, you know, two, three feet, and then shipping them off because there are certain species that love to grow under protected areas with shade and so on and so forth. And so what that ends up being will be very site-specific, right? State to state, town to town, yard to yard. But there's a lot of stuff you can do with, with that space underneath. And increasingly, either mandating things like pollinator-friendly grasses or being able to have access for wildlife, so on and so forth, those are, those are increasingly kind of normal pieces of the permitting process for these types of projects.
Also, what about end of life? My understanding, average panel, that is somewhere around 20 years. What happens when the panels in that project at the end of life? Can you replace them? You know, what, how does that work?
Yeah, so the typical, the typical structure of a project is you have, you have a lease term that is, in this case, initial term of 20 years. 20 years in Maine is the term of the net energy billing program. And then you want to have extensions for, for additional use beyond that because the system lives beyond 20 years. And since we don't know what will happen in 20 years, it's their options to extend should a market exist. But the, the panels themselves generally have a 25 or 30-year power production guarantee. And so, you know, what that means is like, yeah, maybe in year 20, the edge of the panel is rusted, for example, but it still works fine, right? And so, systems just keep producing energy. And so, our, our, the industry's general expectation is that these systems will be around 35 to 40 years before they get replaced. And so, when that time for decommissioning happens, yeah, you just, this is all, it's all bolts and screws. So you just go and you unscrew it and then you disassemble solar panels, recycle them, and, and either do a new system or remove the whole thing. In the past, what, the way you've mounted solar is by like, you know, drilling and pouring concrete and so on and so forth. But these days, you really just, you use ground screws, big ground screws. And so, you drill them in and at the end of their lifetime, you bring the drill back and you turn it around and go the other way. And so there's really no, there's no permanent land impact for these systems.
Also, if, if, if a home already has a solar system built in, can that home or that property hook into your system, kind of get a double whammy in that system? Is that something that people do?
They do. Sometimes, people who have roofs that are not big enough to support, properties that are not large enough to support solar installation that would offset all of their energy use, they could, you know, get what they can get on their own property and then subscribe to a solar company for the rest.
So kind of get a double, double, double whammy?
Yeah.
Todd, can you please address the questions that have, and people have asked me with regard to CMP paying for the infrastructure, but the solar programs are not supporting that infrastructure? The, the power lines, the, you know, the poles, et cetera?
Yeah, so the, this is what I was kind of referring to earlier with the, the benefits of distributed generation are more than just the power generation. It's things like, like with the capacity, for example, if you have, if you have 100 megawatts of community solar projects operational in the state, that's 100 megawatts of potential capacity that those companies are not getting paid for, but that is a benefit to the grid. And so what that means is that on a, that's 100 megawatts of power, that CMP does not have to go source and transport through its own transmission and distribution networks, less wear and tear and stress on the system, so on and so forth. So there's a lot of those types of benefits that are not included in the calculus of that cost shift argument, but also utilities are regulated, right? And so, there's a, there's a basic math there, the, the alchemy happens behind the scenes, but the basic math is, you know, cost that they, their, their cost that they invest in their grid times approval by the Public Utilities Commission, times guaranteed profit rate. That's the business model that they have, right? And so, when it comes to how they're going to cover these missing costs from this portion of the electricity supply, that is being handled between the utilities and the, and the Public Utilities Commission on how their profits are approved or not approved. Because there's like, there's a million different examples of that type of thing. Like when a storm comes and the pole gets knocked down, they're going to have to go explain to the PUC why they should get a profit margin on replacing that pole. Or when, you know, when a substation reaches the end of its life and they have to rebuild the substation, meanwhile, now the town is not the same size as it was when they built that substation initially, right? So they're going to have to go redesign that substation for the next phase of its life. They're also going to have to explain to the PUC what costs they should get reimbursed for versus what they should spend themselves. So my, my real answer to the question of the, of how this gets accounted for is it gets accounted for between the PUC and utilities.
See, that's where I'm confused, how, how CMP or whoever can then be forced to repay a retail and still maintain a profit margin without passing on that extra cost of solar onto all of the consumers?
Well, they definitely are.
Well, that's what I'm saying, I don't understand, as a net-net, if, if you put half the state in solar tomorrow, the cost of everybody's light bill is going up because there's no way they're going to pay...
Unless you are participating.
Correct, if you're not participating, everybody's going to pay more money for power because you've got all this retail power on the grid instead of wholesale power.
What I'm saying is, is that, that section of the case, that the, the syst, having a bunch of solar on the grid saves CMP a lot of money that they're not telling you about. That's things like depression of capacity prices.
Yeah, why are they fighting?
Correct.
Because they've been in control since 1950, whatever it is.
CMP doesn't control, CMP doesn't control the power, they control the...
They control...
Well, of course, they need more money.
You know, I was saying, it doesn't make any sense that they would fight. You were right, you kind of shared with us the key, now, the wholesale value of a kilowatt is five cents.
Correct.
That's what it's worth.
Of the energy.
Correct.
Yeah.
So that's, if, if they paid that, most of these projects, particularly the little ones on your roof, wouldn't be worth doing.
Correct.
But there's a delivery portion also that's stacked into that.
Well, that, and that's the point.
Yeah.
Because you're not having to deliver it.
Correct.
And for, back to the taxes, one of the largest taxpayers to our communities is CMP.
Right.
Because of all of the land that they have poles and wire and transfer stations. So, again, if you put 600 acres into solar farm, they don't pay any tax. So I, these are all just subsidies, and I, in all fairness, I don't really think that's the point of this meeting. I mean, that's the lay of the land in Maine until somebody changes it, it's the way it's going to be. Doesn't mean it can't benefit Sangerville, maybe a solar farm would work for us. But if, if this is the lay of the land for the next 20 years, I'm concerned that we could lose a lot of acreage to this strategy. And I'm not sure that's good for us.
Yeah, I think so, on that, on those specific points, so there's, right now, the, I'll say too that the, the cost shift argument is, I say, how did we get here, right? We got here because, the, actually, the story of net metering is quite interesting. It all kind of happened by accident in the 80s, there's a podcast about it, if you're interested, just bring it. Somebody just connected the system to the grid on their own and nothing happened. That, that was how this whole thing started. But net, net metering as a policy makes sense up until a certain point. And we're kind of at, we're at that point, but to your, it is the law, the law of the land and this is the universe in which we operate. Would solar developers argue for a net metering, like drawing a policy from scratch? No, because it is not reflective of the value generated by solar. And we would argue that we want, we want to look at that locational value of the specific solar farm in a specific place and pay a space on that value. That's what we want. The utilities don't want any of these systems connecting because it's a headache for them. They're used to negotiating with their five or 10 power plants and delivering the power. And they have a, have their friends and their lobbyists and so on and so forth, and they have that ecosystem worked out, it's very straightforward, it's served them very well over the years. But now what's happened is the price of these systems has come down so much and the policies have opened up the doors to connect lots of systems. And under, until you change the rules, then this is the regime that we operate under. And so, I don't think you, I think you would find that basically all the stakeholders in this space think that net metering is not the best policy, but it's the one that we have now. And the fights that are coming, they've already happened. I mean, Maine has established this CNI tariff for, for some solar projects and they're making additional revisions. The rules will continue to change and they'll get smarter and hopefully, and, and they will evolve. But the reality of where we're at today is that, yes, we have this net energy billing program and then also the reality is that the less than 3% of electricity in Maine comes from solar. So we're talking about a miniscule percentage share of the energy generation. And so, all the, the cost shift stuff, like even if it was true, it's something that might happen in the future. It's not something that's happening today because there's so little solar actually in operation. The, so I'll, I'll leave that there. But the, I think the, the question that you, that you have to ask yourselves, yeah, is, you know, how do you want to frame, I mean, I haven't read your land use policy in great detail, but...
Much there. You can't have a chicken within a mile of town as a territory.
Rooster, rooster.
Rooster, that's a...
So I think there's a, there's a, there's a spectrum of ways that you can approach this. You can, you can do what Glenburn did and said like, "Whoa, we got one, okay, that's enough. We don't want to do this anymore," and they shut the whole thing down. You can do what Monson has done and we haven't done anything yet.
So you have no ordinance?
We have no ordinance. We called the, it wasn't the same guy who called you, but somebody else in his position called, Brian Turner was the code enforcement officer at the time. And he asked about the, the policy and he said, "No, we don't have a policy, you go for it." And he didn't like take, he's like, "Well, I've never heard of such a response." He used to fighting, 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 fighting. And so, so they said, "Yeah, no, we don't." And so, since we don't, you're free to, to do what you want. Other towns that don't have policies say, "We don't have a policy, so you cannot do this until we implement a policy." And I think that's just the question of how the town wants to approach these things that are outside of the box.
Do you think that's true based on state law? Do you think if they have no policy that you're blocked?
No, well, because the example I'm thinking of is actually Dover Foxhawt. So we called them about a project in Eastover and they said, "We don't have a policy, we're working on one," is a very similar line, is like, "We're thinking about it, we will, we will not issue a permit until the policy is, is renewed." And it took them six months or something.
Every town has worked on one.
Yeah.
But it's all pipe, setback, barriers, fencing.
Yeah.
As far as the mechanics of it, does the PUC regulate, you have to have fences and it has to be so high?
No, it's, it's electrical code, right? So we're going to have a fence because electrical codes says you should, or the insurance company says you should have a fence. And, you know, we're going to have, we're going to have setbacks because we don't want trees falling on those solar panels. And we're going to have, you know, strong foundations because the system has to have a stamped engineer. Like it's financing, insurance is driving all of this. Like we can't go to get financing for a project that's tucked up against people's back doors and has them leaning on two-by-fours, et cetera, et cetera. It's, and to your point about what you're seeing out there, you know, I was scrolling back through Dover's earlier this afternoon, it's, yeah, it's setbacks, it's, it's site barriers, it's what the most...
Have you run into a natural worms?
It's come up a couple of times, not in Dover, but yeah, we, we ran into that in, in Bezi, in Bezi for a project, yeah.
I've read some towns, like Redfield, because that one's so strict, there's no way you could ever put one.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So maybe when you hit that point, why don't you just say, "We're not having solar?"
Exactly.
Yeah.
That might be what you said.
That's what I mean. And honestly, personally, that's my deal. You either should have an ordinance that says you're going to have them, or where you don't need an ordinance, or you're going to have an ordinance that says, "We're not going to have them." I'm not really one way or the other.
Your Monson project for the town?
Yeah.
What does that generate, in terms of revenue?
It's a, well, so, it's a rooftop, it's not underground, but it's on...
Oh, okay.
It's on the roof of the sand shed of the transfer station. It's on the roof of the sand shed with the transfer station. And it powers all the municipal needs, the town office, the gym, the transfer station, and one other thing.
Okay.
It's 27 kilowatts.
So you're not getting a check per se? You're just getting credits?
We get the credits, yeah.
Yeah.
How many panels on?
Twenty-seven times about three, so 75%.
So what, say 27 meg?
Twenty-seven kilowatt.
Oh, kilowatt.
If, if Monson had 25 acres that it was willing to cover, would that be a viable strategy? Could they?
And we are, we are looking into.
Okay.
Well, we're actually looking into using some town-owned land that's in a good connectivity spot to build a municipal-owned system that we can then have our local residents and businesses be the subscribers. And that's interesting because this is now, take off my UGE developer hat and my select board hat, is we're stripping out the developer fee, we're stripping out the profit in the project, and we can borrow on much more advantageous terms. And with the Inflation Reduction Act, there's extra benefits for municipal-owned systems. And there's extra benefits for systems that serve low and moderate income subscribers. But that's another point, actually, we'll come back to that. So you can make a really good project that probably actually wouldn't be viable for a private developer, but a municipality could do that themselves if they had an appetite to do that. Because then you gotta, you gotta operate it. You gotta bill or collect. You gotta, you could just do it through the utility district, for example. But you gotta have an appetite to do it.
Interesting. So two years ago, oh, well, roughly 19, politically, the landscape changed. Things that were not viable were viable. So let's say Monson takes on a project that you just described. And three years from now, the rules change. What will happen then?
Yeah, generally speaking, rules don't change retroactively, generally speaking. And so the world will go on and new projects will be developed or new projects will be developed and have you. If rules get changed retroactively, there will.
Well, they just put an end to net metering?
Yeah.
And so you're gonna, you're gonna get wholesale?
Yeah. Well, then, yeah, no, a lot fewer projects will get, will get developed. Because in order for, in order for a project like that to make sense, you need very, very small development and interconnection costs. And it's really interconnection costs that drive that whole thing. So you would see, there's kind of an, there's an inverse relationship here between what I think makes a good project and what a policy like that would call a good project. Because I think like, hey, we should put solar farms on ground fields, on land that can't be used for anything else, on rooftops, on parking lots, those types of places. Those are by definition way more expensive to build on than calling up Farmer Joe and saying, hey, you're strapped for cash. Let me lease your land for, what do you get for hay? I'll give you 20% more and guarantee it for 40 years. And that's a bad situation, but that's what happens in a lot of places. So you, in a scenario in which they end net metering and just give a lower rate, to be honest, that's the direction it's going. But when that happens, you're gonna see less development on.
But the grandfathering, you believe us that way? Or is that, is that in the law that anybody under this is locked in for?
20 years.
Okay, alright. So there's not a risk to Monson, once you've got it? If you set it up under these rules?
Well, it stays that way. There's always a risk.
Yeah. There's a risk that you would have a legislature that passes a retroactive.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, that could happen easily.
So there's no, nothing beyond that?
That's the main one, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Another risk would be, hey, what if there's so much power developed, right? What if there's so many solar projects developed that you develop one saying, hey, we can make this work at a 10% discount to our subscribers. But then 10,000 new projects get developed and all of a sudden the supply pushes down the price of those credits. And now people are offering a 50% discount. And at 50%, your project goes bankrupt. That could be a risk.
Right.
But I think that's, that's not gonna happen because there's limited capacity in the grid. And so there's a huge first mover advantage here where if you can get there before everybody else, it might be, it might cost you close to nothing to interconnect your system. But at a certain point, more and more projects come on and then it starts costing millions and millions and millions of dollars to do that. And those projects will all get canceled. I think that's what's gonna be the limiter to solar development in Maine.
Is there a limited number of allocated kilowatts under the current?
Indirectly.
Okay.
Indirectly, yeah. So the legislature is, the legislation is designed to target a certain number of kilowatts. And that number is, I think, 750. And then to add a certain number per, per year. It's not explicit like that, but that's the way that the program is designed.
Okay.
So I think you don't have to have a solar panel in Sangerville for people in Sangerville to subscribe.
That's correct.
Because there's someone already heavily.
I would say, I've been solicited.
Yeah, yeah. And this is funny. So you have to be part of the same utility. You have to be a CMP customer. The project could be in York, it could be in Monson, you know, it doesn't matter, same grid. What happened was in 2019, the land rush started because of policy change. Everybody, my own company included, thought, oh, this is gonna be great. You know, we're developing, at that time, close to 20 projects. And we thought they would all be online in 2021, 2020, 2021. The problem was the utilities were not set up to handle hundreds of applications for solar projects all at the same time. Because you have to model, have to model, how does this going to impact the grid and operations of everything else? And so they started doing one, two, and then they had to go back and fix things. And then, you know, yada, yada, yada. It took, it's taken them years to study these projects, let alone that goes through permitting and so on and so forth. So the mailers started coming out back when people thought all these systems are gonna be online very soon. And so they're signing people up and then just watching the clock to wonder when all these are gonna be built.
Very interesting.
The only other thing I questioned, when we were talking about end of life in the system, you mentioned the word recycle. Anything that I've read about solar and the recycling at end of life doesn't sound very promising. Is there anything, is there any, anything out there new as far as how woods are gonna be recycled other than landfill?
Yeah, for sure.
Because right now, that's, I mean, that's the, what's all that's out there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And so, so think about it this way. So if you go back before 10 years ago, who had solar panels? People lived off grid. Maybe some people in California and New Jersey, it was starting to get cool. The market was not very big. And then, and so when the market's not very big, it's just treated like other e-waste, right? You send it in. But what happened in the meantime was policies started to be enacted to promote these markets. When I say markets, I mean solar market. Germany started to, they decided they wanted to be the leader in panel manufacturing. So they scaled up manufacturing. And then China decided they wanted to be number one. And when that happened, everything changed. Because now we're talking about manufacturing at scales that were multiple orders of magnitude higher than they had been even just a few years before. That continues now. And that depressed the price of modules, which then made it economically feasible in way more places. And now we're at the point where it basically makes sense everywhere. So now we're talking about an industry that's not like a couple thousand panels per year. We're gonna be talking about billions of panels per year. And now we have an industry that's big enough to generate a market for after, like post-operational life. And so panels are now being designed to be disassembled easier. They are, there are startups that are out there that are already monetizing end-of-use equipment. One of the funniest questions I think from the permitting side is a lot of towns say like, oh, what? At the end of, at the end of the system's life, how do we know that you're gonna clean this up? How do we know that you're not just gonna walk away and abandon the system? And there's three, there's three reasons why. One is that the interconnection agreements that you get with the utility, they're in perpetuity. And that is an agreement that's gonna become more valuable over time. Because as there's less and less space in the grid, the space you do have is more valuable, right? It's inventory, it's a different form of inventory. Two is that the bulk of the system's mass is steel or aluminum. And so that has scrap value that I don't think is going anywhere. And three is that the panels themselves are going to become, they don't just stop working. They're less efficient. They don't just stop working. And so if I was to disassemble a project today, what I would do is I would call a school or some sort of nonprofit and I'd say, hey, do you guys want a bunch of solar panels? And they'd say, sure. And I'd say, great. And then I'd take a tax write-off on all of that. That doesn't cost me anything. I earned money. And then I would call a scrap company and say, hey, do you want a bunch of aluminum? And they'd come and take all the stuff and they'd pay me for it. And then I would tell the town that the system is decommissioned. And I would have, I'd made a profit on the whole thing. Meanwhile, we're being asked to post bonds for like decommissioning bonds and stuff. So I just, I think the scale of this industry has reached a point where it's starting to get its own legs as far as what happens after the initial lifetime of the projects. And just the, the building blocks of these projects are so valuable that they, there's reason to stick around. Yeah.
Well, I mean, Maine is, Maine is not very recyclable friendly. I mean, perk plant is all shut down. Fiberite didn't work. I think if the people in Maine really knew how much of their, right now, all your households and everything, probably 90% of that is all going to land.
No, exactly. It stresses me out every time I put something. I still separate it and then I bring it to the transfer station.
It's all going to land.
I just tripped that tire and it's going right in the crusher.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's all going in the same swamp when it's time. It's all out of nowhere.
And then we add a billion panels in the next 20 years and these landfills are gonna be full.
Well, my point is they're not going in the landfills.
Not all of them.
No, because there are, there are companies that are already taking the panels and disassembling them and using them and building other things out of that.
But they are right now because there's not that many on the grid. But once it comes to there's so many, that's what I worry about. I see that as no different than, you know, 20 years ago, recycling cardboard and recycling paper, chipping plastic, that was actually a profitable market. Everybody made money doing that because the end use was far greater than the cost of doing it. And that's what I worry about, solar and windmills. Once you throw so many of these out there, the cost, when you have that magnitude of them, the cost of handling it, disposing of it, is probably gonna be greater than the value of that end of life.
I had read an article that they had heavy metals in them and were considered hazardous waste. Is that correct?
There's probably trace amounts somewhere.
Okay.
You know, it's electronics.
Because handling is different for a hazard waste than just a little.
It's not categorized as hazardous.
Okay.
But I don't understand what you said, when they, when, say you have a five-year cycle, 20 years, you tear it up, you're not really recycling it. You're just basically selling it off or like you said, giving them away. They're not being shredded.
No, they're not being shredded.
You're going back and use them.
Yeah.
Eventually they're gonna get to that.
Eventually, they're gonna go somewhere.
It's gonna, so you can, stick with the trash example. Like before there were landfills, there was all these piles of trash in the woods, right? You just go throw your trash somewhere. And then it got too much. And we got organized and we said, there's gotta be a better way to do this. And so whether we establish a municipal landfill or whether you establish privately-owned landfills, the system, the market for trash became so big that then all of a sudden, other opportunities opened up to have a privately-owned landfill or open a fiberite facility or do a perk incineration plant, whatever, whatever it is. That's what I'm saying is gonna happen here. It's already happening. The industry is getting so big that they don't just go in the trash anymore. They're going to somebody else who sees value in those pieces.
Some of the ordinance, I think all of them, they're decommissioned. When they send an ashtray out to show the black people are not stuck with solar panels.
Yeah.
I'm sure that's an. That appears to be standard for other Sangerville ordinance.
Yeah, it's quite common. I think it's, you know, my personal view is that I think it's unnecessary, but it is common.
So would you look around here if you knew that you had a subside plant to store, did you mention that?
We generally assume that. We assume, our general assumption is that we'll have to because it's a subject.
Every part of your contract is part of the project, I would imagine. So I mean, that is a concern. End of life and what is.
You know the contract, is it?
Yeah, right.
Yeah, but if you're in the day, how do you, how do you come up with a number? Nobody has any idea 20 years from now.
That's right, no.
What it's gonna cost or what it's.
I'm sure it's laid, I'm sure it's laid out. You have a contract, you know, it's laid out in the contract, coming in and going out.
It's usually what happens is there's some sort of industry standard for what the estimated cost will be, which again, I think it's, it doesn't really make sense because the value of the material is higher than zero. And, but nonetheless, I don't make huge rules. So, yeah, it's like, it's a, it's an industry standard for that.
But you, you assume the responsibility, your company assumes that responsibility. As long as you're in business, it's part of a contract and that's your responsibility.
Your property.
Well, that's really the bigger catch to the whole conversation.
Oh, yeah, no, I hear you.
This whole thing goes for so long and everybody makes money. And then if the rules do have to change, all these companies go out of business, that's when the whole thing pays off.
Well, I think there are a number of unknown variables. I mean, that's been one of our concerns. As I said, even when we put our little five, let's not say, little 5KW system in, you know, what do we do at end of life? You know, how do we get it off a route? I mean, there are a lot of variables. But again, I think, you know, the industry just continues to grow. You know, and in terms of even the panels themselves, 98% are made in China now. I'm sure that we're starting to see, you know, we had the horrendous time.
Solonra.
Obama administration.
What's that? Yeah, I was just saying. How good are their guarantees?
Are we seeing more companies now coming and making panels in the United States?
Yeah, that was a big part of the Inflation Reduction Act was credits for American manufactured products.
Those are good jobs. So, yeah, I mean, income and loan down yards. I mean, I think important as opposed to sending 98% of that out of the country.
Yeah, for sure.
Well, I haven't understood if you can guarantee a solar panel will live 25 years, how can they can't guarantee a TV or microwave or anything else? So even with a 25-year guarantee, it's a good number. But I'm just saying, it's a good number on paper, but we're not 25 years in.
Yeah, you know what, you know what happens if, so, you know, a solar company shows up and says, hey, buy my solar panel and it'll last, back then, maybe they said 10 years, right? Maybe it'll last 10 years. And somebody said, prove it. You haven't been, your company hasn't been around for 10 years, let alone 25 years. How do I know that you're telling the truth? And the reality is that nobody knew because they were all new. They were making these things in labs and they were bringing them out, making commercialized technology, bringing it out there. And enough, there was enough pushback, right? People said, hey, we'd love to buy your products, but I don't trust you. I don't believe you. I don't know that this is gonna happen. So what they did is they went out and bought insurance. So all these, when you say it's back, it's got a 30-year performance guarantee, that doesn't guarantee this company's gonna exist in 30 years. It means that there's an insurance policy that's gonna pay it out if that happens.
Tyler, one other question with liability. You said, you know, fence goes around. Let's say something does happen. That's on you guys.
That's on us, yeah. We're just like, just a tenant, right? So we would have all the normal, as if it was a building.
Well, I would be interested in exploring the viability of locations for the town of Sangerville.
That's a good idea.
And.
At least so we know what.
Yeah.
From what you explained to me, Tyler, a big get is, is being very close to through phase. And McFeeder's, which I did not know, is, has a through-phase line on it. And we have a big chunk.
Does Pleasant Street?
Yeah.
So does Pleasant.
Pleasant Street does too?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Two roads.
Yeah, I was on, this whole, this whole time I've been wondering, why does McFeeder's have a through-phase? It doesn't make any sense. It doesn't make any sense. Then I actually looked, I was able to map out the whole circuit. It's what goes to, it goes back out on Route 15 in Torre, Dover. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, my company did.
Okay.
So we've got a piece of property that has it on two sides.
Oh, nice.
It's sandwiched between Pleasant and McFeeder's.
Yeah, it's a big triangle. But what is it, 25, 26 acres?
26.4.
About behind South Garage?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, you'll have to take a look.
Yeah, be curious. We should at least know the numbers.
You bet, you bet.
Yeah, and so kind of circling back to where we started here, as far as economic benefit goes. Yeah, so there's, there's rent for the landowner, whether it's municipality or private, private household. Then there's the, there's the savings that come along from the subscribers, right? And so it is, it's just, it's important to say that my company in particular prioritizes having low and moderate income households be the subscribers to these projects, precisely because they're the ones that have the most to gain from that, right? A dollar in savings for somebody who doesn't have a lot of money is worth more than a dollar in savings in the US law. dollar in savings for somebody who has a lot. The tax credits also support that. So there are, you know, there are programmatic pieces here that are pushing more companies to prioritize low and moderate income optakers for their projects. And then the, the way I see it is there's going to be, there's not going to be, these programs aren't going to last forever, right? It's not worth it. And the, I do feel that the energy use rate payers in Maine are going to get squeezed actually on the other side where the policies that replace this are not going to be as generous, generous to the subscribers. And so when, when we're citing a project, we're trying to get people as close to the project as possible to be the ones that get those benefits. So a similar project is we're doing right now, it's under construction in Norway named on their landfill, is the municipality is using like 20% of the energy and then the other 80% is going to local businesses. That was kind of the pitch that we made for the, for the whole thing. And what we've found is that the interest in subscribing to the system has been overwhelming. And so that's where the location piece has been helpful because, you know, we said, hey, we can bring in, say, 10 businesses to this project and we got 25 or so that are interested. Well, we can put them into some other projects in other towns, just the same.
One of the things I like about, the concern we had about the lack of taxation on our inventory, well, this is land that generates no taxes because we own it. So kind of there's a flip of that, so.
Well, really for me, that's another way solar is a benefit for the town of Sangerville.
Yeah, that's a hard.
There's no benefit for our town for any landowner putting a solar panel. The only benefit for our town is if we utilize our land.
It depends on how you're slicing it, right? If you're wondering like where, where is the money entering the town coffers? Yes, that's factual. If you're wondering how is this project benefiting the economy of Sangerville, that's a different question, right? Because if we're saving your, every resident in Sangerville 15% on their electricity rate.
If the residents of Sangerville buy in?
They don't buy in, they sign up, but yeah. If they're the subscribers, yeah. And so, so this is, I think is a, is a, it doesn't have to be this particular project, but it's a project like this that is putting money back in the pockets of residents here.
Tyler, how do you educate people as far as signing? Whenever I get something that you gotta sign up, that's, I mean, I'm not signing up, I'm not interested. So how do you, how do you get somebody who gets something in the mail? How do you solicit, for example, what you're saying is the people in Sangerville to sign up?
Yeah, we usually do more events, like town, town meeting type events, open houses, kind of thing, get people around. It's, look, it's, it's really helpful that I live here, right? Because I can go around and talk to people and say, hey, two things, one, you know where I live, and two, I already have a solar farm in my backyard, right? I put my money where my mouth was. And so not everybody can do that, not everybody, we don't choose where, can't control where we live oftentimes, but the fact that, that we're able to do that here, I think is really helpful because that, that face time goes, goes extra at a place like this. You know, if you're, if you're in a, if you're in a suburban neighborhood in New Jersey, yeah, mailer might work just fine, right? You're choosing your cable provider and you're choosing your solar provider, just the same. But we like to do more public events.
Tyler, with your project that you're doing personally, have you had negative feedback from anyone else?
Not that I've heard. Yeah, not that I've heard. It's been, it was the first project operational name. It went online December 2nd, 2020, so we just crossed two years. And there have been complaints. The complaints are about how the billing has worked with integration with CMP, right? And that's, I have the good fortune of going first, right?
You're the giddy, you're the giddy.
Yeah, luckily it's been all, it's friends and family who are the subscribers, people I know in town. And so when they say, hey, this doesn't make sense, they can say, hey, can you help me figure this out if it doesn't make sense? As opposed to just getting mad at the call center and canceling your account, you know? So a lot of those, those kinks have been worked out, a lot of just, it took some time to get familiar with everything, but it's going well.
Back in the 90s, they deregulated long distance. It seemed like everybody and your brother-in-law was selling long distance.
Yeah, yeah.
And so this summer, a guy pulls into my yard with like a $500 car and a dirty sweatshirt and he wants to sell me what you're selling.
Yeah.
And I'm like, that, this reminds me of that. And, and I was, I was a fool not to do it, it was a no-brainer, I didn't do it yet. But where do you think that's coming from?
Yeah, no, this is, that's, I'm glad you raised this, she's like a young lady.
Oh, yeah, worse.
So around the, in the early 2000s, right? It was 90s or 2000s, we deregulated the energy industry as well. And so that was when CMP had to shed the power plants and just operate the grid. And so now you could choose your energy provider and that was when everyone started getting calls from, yeah, a million different companies, right? Best deal, lock in your rate now, sign up here, super easy, save a million dollars kind of thing. And what they were doing was giving you a really nice intro rate and then the fine print said they were going to jack up your rate when that term expired. And that left a really bad taste in people's mouths, right? Understandably so. Fast forward to 2020 and now people are getting mailers that say, sign up here, 10% discount, no fees, cancel anytime, it's, sounds too good to be true. It also sounds exactly like what those guys said 20 years ago.
Yeah.
The reality is that these are not the same thing. These are, these are like Netflix accounts. You can, there's no fees, you can cancel anytime you're unhappy. It's also a fixed discount as opposed to a fixed rate. So it's, no matter, whatever the rate ends up being, because the PUC says so, you're always paying less than whatever that is. So it really is a different thing, but it sounds exactly the same.
So with solar, there's no commitment, there's no cost to sign into so many credits from solar?
That's correct.
Because I know with hydro there is. I mean, with a hydro credit, you're actually committing, there's a fee associated with you to get so X amount of hydro credits back. So that's why.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not familiar with that.
I heard from a customer that signed into solar that they weren't saving any money and they talked to a solar provider or whatever and they said, well, there's credits and you won't see them until winter.
So when you first started talking, I was thinking, this is an example where they signed somebody up, the project hadn't been built yet.
Oh.
And so they were waiting, they're waiting, 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 where are these credits, right? This, but what you're, what you're, what you actually said is, is another scenario which also happens where in, in some states, what, that have community solar, what they do is they integrate the solar credits with your electricity bill. And so what's the, what's the challenge here with solar? Solar produces when the sun shines. It doesn't produce solar necessarily when you use electricity. So you're probably at home, you're using electricity at night and in the wintertime, if you have heat pumps, so on and so forth, that does not align with when the solar system is generating power and giving you these credits. So what, so, so what you do is when you sign up with one of these companies, you'll send them your electricity bill and it will, they'll look at the bill and they'll say, okay, based on your annual usage, this is how much solar, how many solar credits you need. And then we'll give you a subscription size that matches that. Now, you're going to get those credits mainly in May, June, July, August, September, and then you're not going to get many credits in the odd months, right? So you're going to suck up all those credits in the, in the sunny six months and put them in a bank. And then you're going to use them in the wintertime when you're running your heat pumps and you're not getting many new credits because the solar farm isn't producing as much. So if you look on a month-to-month basis, those numbers might not add up on a month-to-month basis. But if you look on an annual basis, everything will even out.
So there's no cost associated with that's going into the solar.
That's correct.
Don't you get two separate bills?
You do, you get two separate bills. So what I was, what I was saying just before I skipped the first part of that, what most states do is they integrate the two bills. So you generate, you, you build up your bank in the sunny months, you don't pay then, you just pay as you're using the credits over the course of the year. And so that means that you're, on a month-to-month basis, all the numbers won't make sense. In Maine, they don't let you do that because, surprisingly, to these haven't been too thrilled about all of this. And they do show your credits and they show your bank on the bills, but you have to get billed separately from the solar company unless one of your community solar providers is also one of these competitive energy suppliers that do the rate switch thing. Because they, that's a whole separate category of provider that they allow to do with single billing, so.
We have one guy here in Sangerville that's promoting, and he actually, from his day, he bought a house in Sangerville, he moved up here just for that, that's all he does.
I'd say the.
Promote solar.
If I was 22 years old right now and wanted to work in the solar industry, that's what I would do because that's where the money's at. Because these people get paid commission on every person they sign up, right? And they get their money today. The rest of us, we don't get our money till, we're a long, long time from now, so.
You've earned enough to buy a house.
Yeah.
Appreciate all of your time.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm glad to hear your thinking about this because it's important to not just rush into things, but to think things through and, you know, we've all got these questions, so I'm happy to, happy to spend the time there.
And just one, just a quick question. When you say community solar project, is that what, for example, what we are thinking about? Is that considered a community solar project?
Yeah.
Okay, I just was curious, terminology wise.
Yeah, so community solar refers to these usually ground-mounted systems that are typically, you know, five to 30 acres type of range.
And the one that goes on your home or just, that's a, that's just for you?
That's it.
So the use it or lose it within 12 months?
Well, it's, it's all the same, it's actually all the same program. It's all the same policy framework. It's just a question of, I mean, really what you want to call it. You could have a system on your home, like Rick could say, hey, I've got five kilowatts on my home, I actually only need two and a half.